Perfect time.
You know, that's the first time I've ever called a meeting to order the music.[15.01][15.01](laughing). The offertory music. Let me call the meeting to order, please. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, October 27, 2020. Having called the meeting to order, I'm going to ask Councilmember Wayne Griffin if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then an invocation for council. Please join us in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flagman of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As per our Father, who art in heaven, I will give thy name, thy kingdom, thy will be thy. Father God, as once again for your good and helpful service, I come not holding your righteous name. I want to thank you for all the wonderful blessings that you bestowed upon us from truth and merit just as we've been to ourselves. Our Father, if you would, join this meeting and have us conducted in a way that's pleasing in your sight, pleasing and all, bless your precious Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public form this evening?
No, sir.
Council will move to the minutes of the meeting from October 13. I'll entertain a motion that they be received.
It's illegal.
Have a motion and a second. Any items of note for the clerk this evening? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, contained in your packet are the reports from September. We will have a brief overview of the financial report from Ms. Howell this evening. She went over that report with staff and will be glad to give you any additional information you might require, but to keep things moving along this evening, we are going to get the dashboard version. So the floor is yours, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, I'm going to briefly go over the general fund. In September, we collected $851,000 of revenue for a year-to-date total of $2,443,000. The total operating expenditures were $1.8 million for a year-to-date total of $5,713,000. There was a fund balance usage of $14,000, which gives us a year-to-date total expenditures of $6213,000, and that is 3% under budget. Looking at the dashboards where we compare actual to benchmarks, we do have an overall positive variance of $257,000. And finally, the cash balance of the general fund as of September 30 is $9934,000.
Thank you, ma'am. Council questions? Mr. Seifert or Mr. Mayorman will be glad, or Ms. Howell will be glad to help you with any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayorman, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Briefly, just want to remind you that for all that are insured under the city, open enrollment ends Friday of this week, so if there's any changes that are, need to be made for any of those that are insured, need to make those with HR by week's end. You will see city staff on or about the 9th of November starting to festoon the city with our decorations for Christmas, so that begins on the 9th. I believe they start on Wade Hampton Boulevard and work their way this way. The audit, the annual financial audit begins next week. David, is that right? Is next week? So we will have our external auditors poring through our books for about three weeks of a month. They'll be kind of camped out here at City Hall. The final dine on trade is this Friday night. From everything I've heard from GSA, it has been tremendously successful. I think some of the local business owners have benefited greatly from it. We've learned some lessons on how to better, better do it, but moving forward, I think this is something that the city and GSA and the merchants association can be proud of and continue to invest in. So I want to thank GSA publicly now, since I won't get a chance to do it in advance, for their hard work. Reno and his staff has been great, and the buy-in from the merchants has just been tremendous. So that's a true team effort. And finally, next Friday is our workshop. Starts at noon here on, so that's November, or yes, November 6, noon in, I think it's in B. All, okay, all three. So we will be here next week, so don't forget. I will have an agenda out to you hopefully by week's end, so we will try and stay on target with a certain number of topics. And finally, the one question that did come up last week was some of the pros and cons and cost-benefit analysis for paving asphalt versus concrete specifically to the Cannon Street project. There's some things that I think council really does need to discuss in detail with staff, and I can't think of no better time to do that than that workshop, so as opposed to going through that information tonight with your, by your leave, we'll just handle that next Friday at the workshop. So if there's no objection to that, that would be my recommendation. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Council, in regards to old business, we've got a number of items before us this evening. I do ask that we will hold over items 1, 2, 3, and 4 for additional information in executive session, and then we will come back and take care of those items. That will take us to item 5. This is the second and final reading of ordinance number 56-2020. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Just Call Larry LLC located at 3385 Brushy Creek Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of S1 for said property. Mr. Mac Mahan, any new or additional information in regards to this ordinance?
Yes, sir. Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 19 and made a recommendation for approval. That's all the information that I have, sir.
Council, it comes with a recommendation from the Planning Commission for approval. I entertain a motion for the purpose of discussion.
So move. Second.
Motion, second floor is open for discussion. Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Larry, we will get you home before dark tonight, so.[484.03][484.03](laughing).
Thank you. I just hear a little official. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Have a good evening. Council, we moved to the second and final reading of ordinance number 57-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Ray &amp; Sons Investments located on Forest Street from R12 to DRD. Mr. Mac Mahan, new or additional information in regards to 57-2020?
No, sir. There is no new information.
No new information from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, we move to the last item of old business, which is the second and final reading of ordinance number 58-2020. This is an ordinance to amend the city of Greer zoning ordinance by amending Article 5, Zoning District Regulations, Section 8-2, C2 Highway Commercial. Commercial uses permitted by special exception to allow air conditioning equipment, sales, and service. Action is required. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the text, but if you would, allow me prior to making the amended text, let me say that my thinking behind all of this, we're all aware that this was, this is driven by one business, and it seems like we got caught in a time period where we were changing our ordinances, and we've talked about all of that, but at this time, well, first of all, let me say the Planning Commission, they got it right every time. If it came to them as a C3 request, that was, because that was the only song that allowed that, of course, that was, I agree, that was the correct decision to turn that down. And it came back to as, to change the text to allow this air-conditioned business, which is really an HVAC business, not a repair shop, but allow it especially with special exception. Now, what that means is business owner has to go a feet to go before VDA. VDA can say, we're going to allow it or not going to allow it. If it's turned down by them, the applicant has no other recourse except to take legal action against the city requesting that it be overturned, doesn't come back. We are at the point where we're getting ready to redo all of our ordinances, and I'm pretty sure this is one that's going to be looked at, because when you read the text of it, it's about air conditioning, repair, and sales, which leads me to think more of a repair shop where you take your window air conditioner and have it repaired. They get wrong, the, when they, when this ordinance was written, it was to prevent having those kinds of shops anywhere but out on the highway. So my amendment is going to be that instead of allowing it by special exemption, that it is added to the businesses that are allowed under C2. And I don't know the word that we need to put in legally, but that's the, that's how we need to, that I think that we need to proceed, so that's my amendment.
So you're just going to add HVAC to the list of those businesses already allowed?
Yes. And it doesn't have to have a special exemption. It's by right that they're allowed under C2. And then as ordinances are looked at, this ordinance can be updated and refined. We, well, if there's any other discussion, we are, some of the concerns, I think, that this ordinance addressed at one time, it didn't want a lot of stuff sitting around, but we already have ordinances for businesses that says if you're going to have material, if you're going to have dumpster, all of that has to be behind the screen. And then you also have to have screening where commercial, but it's residential, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, before we go, before we go to a second, I've got a question for Mr. Mayorman, but let me follow up with you. Was there any new or additional information in regards to this ordinance 58-2020 that you needed to make council aware of?
No, sir.
Okay. In, in that event, then we're going to move forward, so just stand still. Would you give us an overview, please, sir, of allowing a text amendment by right, a change to an amendment by right?
When we're talking about by right, effectively what you're doing is to put it in very simple terms, is you're adding this to the table of uses, okay? So if an applicant comes in with a similar business and says, and finds a piece of property in C2 and says, I want to have this business in C2, there's no variance, there's no special exceptions, it's just by right. So that's what we're talking about. So I think the best way to explain your request amendment is just to allow the use by right in the C2 zoning. So I think that's what you're looking for a second for. Is that sufficiently explained?
And, and that like any other ordinance we can do on second reading?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay. So is council clear on, clear on what we're amending the text to read?
By amending the text, that means this is the first reading for this one?
No, sir. You, you can make the change prior to second reading. So the, what you read, first reading, was, had the special exception, the three, the three exceptions, those will be removed if the motion gets a second and a favorable vote, and it will be by right. The new question will be, it added, is added to the table of uses and the use is allowed by right.
Got a motion to amend the text that will allow the change by right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Floor is open for discussion.
I wish I could agree with what he's saying, that it shouldn't be where they have to. Their only recourse is to sue the city. It just makes sense. C2 is a, it shouldn't be used for that type of business. So they have to have a security. Those things that do exist.
I think it makes sense, and then I think when you go back and get everything updated, if there's more trades or whatever language we need to change or to add at that point, I think we can do it, but I mean, I agree, I think making a special exception or, I just, I think just allowing it by right makes a lot more sense than it's good. I think that's a good thing for now.
Was the rationale in bringing it to us as by special exception?
The way we were directed at that July 28 meeting was to bring it back as a special exception.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, sir. First reading of ordinance number?
Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt, please? We did skip over appointments to boards and commissions, and I think now's the time probably to jump on that before we roll into new business. Mr. Dennis's term on the housing authority.
You're correct. Thank you, sir. Council, we've, in regards to appointments of boards and commissions, the housing authority of the city of Greer, Board of Commissioners has two terms, one which expires 10/31/2020, the other which Mr. Strange has resigned his position, come before us tonight. Ms. Duncan, do you have additional information in that regard?
The housing authority is recommending that Mr. Dennis completed an additional term if that's council's desire.
Okay. Any, any information in regards to Mr. Strange's resignation at this point?
Yes, there's a recommendation in the packet for Ms. Green from the housing authority. Her information should be there.
Indeed it is. We'll take these actions separately then. In regards to housing authority, Greer, city of Greer Board of Commissioners, Mr. Dennis's term expires 10/31/2020 upon the recommendation of the staff at the Greer Housing Authority. I'll entertain a motion that his, that he be nominated for another term.
So move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for any discussion or questions in that regard. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, Mr. Sorel Strange's term expires 10/31/23. Many of you know Mr. Strange. He is, he has been a volunteer and active member of our community, serving on a number of boards and commissions, just a great fella, and unfortunately has had to resign his term. We, we wish him well. That term is, been recommended by the staff of the housing authority to be fulfilled by Ms. Cynthia Green. You have her information in a bio sketch that is contained in your packet. I'll entertain a motion that Ms. Green fill Mr. Strange's unexpired term.
So move. Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, now let's move to new business, the first of which is the first reading of ordinance number 59-2020. This is an ordinance, the city of Greer, South Carolina, amending the comprehensive fee schedule for the Recreation Department by amending the fees for Greer Golf. Mr. Seifert joins us for that conversation. Seifert, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As a way of reference, when we brought the comprehensive fee schedule to you back in May as part of the budget ordinance, the Recreation Department had created the fees for Greer Golf in a simplified manner that we thought would work. Since then, we have been doing, preparing the configurations for the software that we're using out at Greer Golf, and realized through that process that the admissions tax and the sales tax are at two different rates at that level. So we needed to separate the combined fees in the fee schedule so that we could be collecting the correct tax rate on the different pieces out of the golf course, and that's what this ordinance does. It takes that combined rate at Greer Golf, splits it into the two different pieces.
With that information from staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second?
Second.
Floor is open for questions. And Mr. Seifert?
I see that without cart has been struck through. I guess we have.
That's part of the, the original fees that the Recreation Department did was a green fee with a cart.
Yeah.
And then they did some green fees without the carts, but the combined fee, the green fee is an admissions tax and the cart fee is a sales tax, so we just had to separate the two.
How much is the admissions tax? 4%?
Admissions is five, sales is six.
Really? Wow. The admissions tax goes to the state?
They both go to the state, but it's just charged at a different rate, so we just had to separate it for the software to collect the correct amount.
What does admissions mean?
It is the tax that you pay for, you know, entertainment service. So the pool, out there at the pool, the, the activity of actually playing golf, which is the green fee, similar to the tax that you would pay to a concert or something like that.
Is that charged on tickets then, like ticket sales?
Correct.
Okay.
It's similar.
Didn't know that.
Does this remove the cart plan for the golf members?
No, sir. It moves down to the third section, I believe it is, is just the cart fees alone and the, and then the fourth section is the member cart fee. So it's in a separate little section by itself, it's on page 3 of 4.
I think the, the members used to have, there was like an annual cart plan or something that went with their membership, and you're saying because of the way it's taxed?
Oh, you're talking about the annual cart membership? Trying to remember the discussions from that. I think there's been a lot of movement in the membership fees with the, with the way we're structuring things now. I can't remember specifically if the Recreation Department intends to keep the membership cart fee. I don't, I don't think they do with this being the member fee, member cart fee being at nine holes for $8 and 18 holes for $14, which is reduced from the non-member rate. They do, at the moment, are maintaining the member, the, the membership fee itself to the club.
But that wouldn't have anything to do with the tax piece, right? I mean, if they gave that as a benefit to the members, that, that doesn't, that doesn't have anything to do with the tax piece?
In and of itself, it does not. The, the, having the membership in the club gets you a reduced rate for the cart. There still is sales tax on that cart fee. It's just at a lower rate, or the rate is still 5%, but it's on a lower fee than a non-member fee. So that's the benefit that you would gain being a member.
Thank you.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Council, in executive session this evening, we have two matters to discuss. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss an economic development matter pertaining to Project Apollo as allowed by state statute section 30-470A5. And? Can we add both of them?
We can take both at the same time.
And then, at the same time, another motion to enter into executive session to receive legal advice pertaining to refinancing outstanding debt is allowed by state statute section 30-470A2.
Council, we have two matters before us this evening, economic development matter and the legal matter. They have been stated. As to intent, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Did he make, did he make the motion and then we need a second?
Leads the motion.
Leads the motion. We have a second, yes. Second. Yes. We had two, three people speak at the same time. It's a little confusing. Yes. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, in executive session this evening, we have considered two matters, one in regards to economic development, the other in regards to legal advice. We've taken no action in regards to either item as stated. I will receive a motion to come out of executive session.
So move. Or second.
Have a motion and a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, in regards to old business, items 1 through 4 were held over. For additional information in executive session, we will begin with item 1, which is the second and final reading of ordinance 52-2020. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a portion of two properties owned by Becknell Industrial LLC located on Old Jones Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of I-1 for said properties. Mr. Mac Mahan, new or additional information in regards to ordinance 52-2020?
Yes, sir. Planning Commission held a public meeting on October 19. They make a recommendation of approval of I-1 zoning for ordinance 52 through 55, and that is all the information that I have, sir.
Council comes with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. Do I hear a motion to receive?
So move.
Motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, we'll move to item 2, the second and final reading of ordinance number 53-2020. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Mary Hendricks located at 888 De Young Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of I-1 for said property. Any new or additional information, Mr. Mac Mahan?
No, sir.
Council, I will entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.